A regular meeting in the Independent School District 279 School Board is being held Tuesday, March 20th, in the boardroom at the Educational Service Center. Acting Chairperson Mike Ostafi called the meeting to order. The following members are present. Director Fortner, Director Douglas, Director Brigette, and Director Craig. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone has the agenda before them. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none, I make a motion to accept the agenda.
Okay.
Second by Director Fortner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Up first, we have a presentation, one of the fun ones we get to do, Music on Our Schools Month, performances by Cedar Island Elementary's 5th Grade Band and Osseo Senior High's Chamber Choir. And I would like to ask Christine Weatherman to step forward, please.
Thank you. And Barb's gonna push the magic button for me. Thank you. Acting Chairperson Ostafi, members of the school board, Superintendent McGuire, and members of the cabinet, thank you so much for letting me be here tonight and sharing music in our schools month with you. I'm Christine Weatherman. I am the department, or the district, I'm sorry, music program specialist. Tonight, my presentation is based on the mission statement, and we're gonna start with inspire and how music fits into that. A 3rd grader at Elm Creek said that music is important to me because it's creative and it inspires people. I'm gonna ask right now that the board move down to the reserved chairs so that you can be inspired by the Osseo Senior High Chamber Choir. That piece, that piece is an Estonian. I'm sure you all know that. And it's called Musika because it talks about the beauty of music and how it's not just in the world, but it's an eternal thing. It's something that lasts forever. And this group in front of you, we are missing a few today, but this group in front of you has been invited to sing at the Ordway in May. And if you are interested in a free ticket, just contact me. They are part of the concert program, so we have had a composer from Mexico coming in and working with the students. He's here this week. His name's Bernardo, and he is writing a piece for this group to premiere at the Ordway on May 22nd at 7:00 PM. So we are very excited about that. So if you, again, if you're interested, I can get you free tickets. So it's gonna be a great, a great program and a great time to be able to share. Our next piece is called "Nothing Gonna Stumble." Why don't you go? I don't wanna hurt her anymore. And this is a spiritual by Greg Gilton.
I've been walking with the Lord for many a day. Nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. Trying to abide in the straight and narrow way. Nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. But when my time on earth is done, and I hear my name, and I hear my name. Oh, when my time on earth is done, these weary feet are gonna run. Not gonna stumble, not gonna trip. No, I'm not gonna stumble. No, I'm not gonna slip. No, nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. When I go to walk that golden street. Now the devil is a liar. And a cheater too. Nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. And if he gets his way. We'll make a slider out of you. Nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. But if you listen for the Spirit's voice in the moment of truth, oh, if you listen for the Spirit's voice, He'll help you make the right choice. Not gonna stumble, not gonna trip. No, I'm not gonna stumble. No, I'm not gonna slip. No, nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. When I go to walk that golden street, that golden street. Not gonna waver, waver, falter, sway or fall. Not gonna stumble or slide. Waver, waver, falter, sway or fall. Not gonna stumble at all. Not gonna stumble, not gonna trip. No, I'm not gonna stumble. No, I'm not gonna slip. No, nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. When I go to walk that golden street. Not gonna stumble, not gonna trip. No, I'm not gonna stumble. No, nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. When I go to walk that golden street. Not gonna stumble, not gonna trip. No, I'm not gonna stumble. No, I'm not gonna slip. No, nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. When I go to walk that golden street, that golden street. Not gonna stumble, not gonna trip. Not gonna stumble, no, I'm not gonna slip. Not gonna stumble, not gonna trip. Not gonna stumble, no, I'm not gonna slip. Not gonna stumble, not gonna trip. Not gonna stumble, no, I'm not gonna slip. When I go to walk that golden street. Not gonna stumble, stumble my feet.
Thank you so much, Margaret Saban and the Osseo Chamber Choir. We're gonna continue with some inspiring music from a cowbell group from Cedar Island 5th Grade. The piece was written and directed by Jane Ruhanamini. We can get you one.
This is the 5th Grade Cedar Island Band. These are the percussionists. And we've been playing together since October. And these students, I asked, would anyone like to play for the school board? In a board meeting, and they, I had five people volunteer. They've given up their recess to the classroom. So they've been practicing about half an hour, once a week, for about a month for you. And this is our, really, our first performance ever. And we've been practicing in the cafeteria. We're gonna be just fantastic. And this one is called Cowbell's Rule. In fact, one of the choir guys played it a few years ago when I did it with another group, I think it was Othview, about, I'm not even gonna say how many years ago, because I had a lot of percussion then too. So here is Cowbell's Rule. One, two, three, and.
Thank you so much, students and Jane.
School board, you can go back to your seats.
All right, so hopefully you were a little inspired by that. I'm gonna move on. Rush Creek was able to get a 279 grant, and they hired Jim Hirsch, who's an area composer. And he came in and worked with their 1st grade with literature that they were already reading, and created songs and movement and artwork to go with that. And their theme was "At Home in Minnesota." They did that just a few weeks ago. It was wonderful. Continuing on the inspire, we keep purchasing new instruments so that children have good things to play on and inspire them to keep going in music. We got tubas this year. It was awesome. The Jazz Festival we have every year. The middle school jazz bands and the high school jazz bands play on a day altogether so they can hear each other. And they get a guest clinician in who gives them comments, and then in the afternoon, they hear a professional jazz ensemble. So that's always great for our kids. Dr. McGuire was part of the inspiration for a song that's Park Brook's theme song, written by one of our music teachers, Steve Reaster. And I think her words were the glorious diversity part of the song. Is that correct, Dr. McGuire?
Yes.
So you and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. are on the top of the piece of music, so we know where you rate. I'm gonna move on to prepare. And a 3rd grader said, something I enjoy about music is that sometimes it's relaxing, and I like how it sometimes changes, so in preparation for learning about music. We have ukuleles at many of the schools. This happens to be at Woodland and here again at Park Brook. That prepares the kids with learning notes and especially for orchestra and rhythms. We have orchestra lessons in 5th grade, preparing them for orchestra in middle school and high school. We restring the string instruments every year. It takes hours and hours and yards of string, but that's so the kids have decent instruments to play on and they're prepared to play as well as they can. Fernbrook tried a 5th grade choir this year during the school day, was very successful, and she feels that that will prepare our kids more for middle school choir and high school choir. And we do bucket drumming at a lot of the schools, rhythm skills and more of the hip hoppy music that the kids are into. That's one of the schools. Here's another one. I think this is at Zane Wood even, because I see a Zane Wood contention. All right. We also use boomwhackers, and I was worried you wouldn't know what those were, so I brought one. Kelly already heard me playing it today, but they're, they're really simply just a tube, but when you hit it on either the floor or your hand, it makes a certain pitch. This is a C. And then it has this magic cap that I threw on the floor. Or something had to go wrong. And if you put that at the end, it changes the pitch for an octave lower. So the kids are really good. They don't fight with them because they want to play them so badly, and they play whole songs. If you go on YouTube, Harvard has whole huge songs that it's very fun to listen to. So it's another way we prepare kids. And every 4th grader plays recorder. Believe it or not, this year I ordered 4,253 recorders. Yeah, we don't want them all together in one room, but it does prepare them. They also play orf instruments. Those are pitched percussion instruments that are either metal or wood. Prepares them and band lessons in 5th grade. I needed to include this because one of our band teachers has been preparing 5th grade and 6th grade students for 36 years, and he's retiring this year. So I needed to have Kevin as part of our presentation and preparing. We're gonna move on to confidence, building confidence in our students. Woodland has an Eagle Choir that's after school, and those kids perform all over the city for nursing homes and everywhere else, building confidence with the students for how they perform. Northwest Suburban Conference has a festival each year where our top bands, choirs, and orchestras perform, and again, a clinician judges them and works with them. So this is two of our high schools' band, and there's the third one. Two of our choirs. The one that you just heard is the bottom picture. And the third one. We have lots of kids in music. The two orchestras so far. And the third one. It was an exciting day, exciting day. Confidence. This is a 3rd grader again. In music, I'm good at being part of a group and singing, so to have that confidence already in 3rd grade is pretty amazing. We also offer musicals, and that really builds confidence in our kids. Birch Grove did Wonderland this year. Maple Grove Senior High did The Pajama Game. Osseo Senior High did Hairspray. And Park Center just finished In the Heights, which was written by the same gentleman that wrote Hamilton. Courage. Takes a lot of courage to perform. There we go. Music makes me curious because I don't know what's gonna happen next. I think that's a courage thing right in itself. During the Elm Creek 3rd Grade Program, most of the children had solos, so I think that takes courage. We have an honor band for the top kids in, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say, I said honor groups. We have a band, orchestra, and choir for the top children in the district with the rest of the Northwest Suburban District. We had 16 Osseo students in the honor band, 29 in the honor choir, and 27 in the honor orchestra this year. It's a very exciting evening. Competence. We have to have competence in order to perform. I liked this saying too. Music is important to me because it helps me learn new things. The confidence and the competence to go on. We've really been working on some of the choir pieces, and I think you noticed that with what Maggie and her choir did today. We're trying to get more diversity in what we have in our collection. So we've, we had a pot of money from the Capital Fund to buy more culturally relevant octavos. Octavos are the pieces of music they sang and what she's holding, so that our kids can experience more of that diversity. We have an 8th grade orchestra festival each year, and this year it was directed by Matt Carone from Maple Grove Senior High. We had 187 students, 8th grade students, participating in that, and it was wonderful. Very much competence in that. Contribute to community. Music is important to me because I like to sing new songs with my family. That's her community in 3rd grade, and that's awesome. Fernbrook has a sing-along every year where the community is invited in to sing with them. Grove Area Percussion, or our drum line, performs all over and does some service projects. You usually hear them called GAP. It's all three high schools together in this drum line, and actually, it grew so much this year that we have two. That's a little smattering of the kids in it. 279 Children's Choir has been in existence for 51 years, and they continue to perform all over the district. There were 148 music events on our calendar that parents and teachers and anyone in the community could attend this year. And engaging in a lifetime of learning. Music makes me feel very good. I like any type of music. At home, I listen to lots of music. For the ninth year in a row, Osseo has been honored to receive the Best Community for Music Education from the National Association of Music Merchants. I have applied for it for the 10th year, and we should be able to find out in the next couple of weeks whether we received it. Schmidt Music has graciously provided all of you with a plaque thanking you for supporting music in our district, so thank you from myself as well. We offer guitar at all three high schools, which is definitely something of a lifelong learning, lifetime of learning. This gentleman is Jeremy Matson. He's an Osseo Senior High grad. He goes to Concordia. He's a sophomore. He's been writing music for the Osseo Middle School Orchestra, and they have really been enjoying it. And of course, swinging ads epitomizes the engaging in a lifetime of learning. The arts teach people how to be human, to bring beauty into a world that so needs it. So in conclusion, our mission through music is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Weatherman. Anyone have any comments, questions?
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair. I just wanted to thank you very much for bringing music to us. We look forward to this meeting all year. I think it's wonderful to share some of the great work our students are doing and the joy it brings, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to say thank you also, especially to the students that came here tonight. It's not easy to be in front of a group of people that you don't know at all, so I just wanted to say thank you to them and you for all the hard work that you've done, and also to Kevin Rasir, who was also my band teacher. So I'm sad to see him go, but thank you to him for dedicating so much time to our district and our kids.
Thank you.
And all of you. Thanks.
Who else?
I'll just add that this year, my 5th grader was in band, and I went to the orientation meeting with her, and it was so great to see how many kids and families are engaged in the process and started band this year. It was really encouraging to see. I had no idea how popular the program was, so thank you for all your work.
Thank you. And it's, it's wonderful that we've been able to support children with instruments who've needed them. I appreciate that too. We are very good. We don't turn anyone away, and I appreciate that.
And I also wanted to comment on the choir earlier. They were, they are now viral sensations.
Yes.
They were at Glen Sheen Mansion two or three weekends ago. They were waiting in line, so they decided to sing. And that got captured on video. Glen Sheen posted it, and it's been seen now 27,000 times with their bus.
Yes. Isn't that wonderful?
Very, very nice.
Thank you.
I'll just echo everybody else's comments. Thank you so much for providing different kinds of opportunities for all children in the district.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. The next order of business will be the election of officers. I will now open nominations for Board Chair.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate you, Mike Ostafi, as Chair.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other nominations for Office of Board Chair? Do we have any other nominations for Office of Board Chair? There are no further nominations. Nominations for the Office of Board Chair are closed. We need to have a motion to recommend, to vote for me as Board Chair. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you very much. At this time, since I was Vice Chair, we need to select a Vice Chair. I will now open nominations for Board Vice Chair. Do we have a nomination for the Office of Vice Chair?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Jim Brigette for the Office of Vice Chair.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for Office of Vice Chair? Do we have any other nominations for Office of Vice Chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Vice Chair are now closed. I will now make a motion to elect Director Brigette as Vice Chair. Are there any seconds?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Nay, or none? Congratulations, Vice Chair Brigette. Since Vice Chair Brigette was the Treasurer, we now have an opening for Treasurer. Do we have a nomination for the Office of Treasurer?
I would like to nominate Heather Douglas as Treasurer.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations for Office of Treasurer? Do we have any other nominations for Office of Treasurer? There are no further nominations. Nominations for the Office of Treasurer are now closed. I will make a motion to, to elect Director Douglas as Board Treasurer. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Brigette. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Director Douglas has been elected as Board Treasurer. We do not need to elect a Board Clerk since that position is currently filled. Okay. Thank you very much. Next up is the Audience Opportunity to Address the Board. So we have guidelines for Audience Opportunity to Address the School Board at regular business meetings. I do need to read all of this. In the interest of community engagement, the Osseo School Board provides an opportunity for members of the audience to address the board as follows. Anyone who wishes to address the board must complete a speaker card and submit it to the School Board Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Speaker cards are available on the public information table by the, by the handouts. Once the Audience Opportunity to Address the School Board has begun, no additional cards will be accepted. The Board Chair will call on each speaker who has submitted a speaker card, first calling on those addressing an item included in the current agenda, followed by those addressing topics not on the current agenda. Speakers will be called in the following order: Students, Parents, Guardians of Students, District Employees, District Residents. District Employees, District Residents, and all others. When called upon, please state your name and topic. Our remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole, not to any specific member or to any person who is not a member of the board. If more than three individuals have organized to speak on the same topic, please designate a spokesperson who can summarize the issue. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Longer time may be granted at the discretion of the Board Chair. During this agenda item, normally not to exceed twenty minutes, subject to the discretion of the Chair, the Board and Administration will listen to comments, ask clarifying questions if needed, and respond when appropriate. The Board Chair may delegate responsibility to the Superintendent or the Superintendent's designee to follow up with the speaker within a few days following the meeting. Comments and interactions between Board Members and the public are expected to be respectful, courteous, professional, and civil. The Board Chair will be responsible for ensuring that interactions meet these standards and will disallow inappropriate interaction. In particular, speakers may not address criticism towards an individual district employee. Such concerns should be directed privately to the employee supervisor or higher-level administrator. Personnel concerns should be directed to individuals in the following order: Building Principal, Executive Director for Human Resources, Assistant Superintendent, Superintendent, and finally, in writing to the School Board. Thank you for bearing with me through that. First up, we have Mr. Michael Vogel.
Good evening, Members of the School Board. My name is Michael Vogel, and I am a father of a child who attends Woodland Elementary and another child who attends Arbor View Early Childhood Center. And I am before you today to ask you to unite against a proposal that was offered during last month's meeting, which, which suggested, as clarified in the press, that staff members, armed staff members who have a permit to carry under Minnesota law be allowed in, be allowed in the schools. And back in 2004, when me and my wife were sophomores at Butler University, a lockdown was called on a late, on a late Friday morning. And we didn't know what was going on until texts started pouring in from people who are outside of the camp, who are outdoors at the campus during the lockdown, where we found out that a trespasser at a campus building about a hundred yards from where we were opened fire and shot someone. A manhunt was ensuing, and we sat there wondering what was going to happen next. We were trying not to act scared out of our minds. And as more information was coming in, as well as from news reports after the fact, we found out that the person killed was a member of the Butler University Police Department. The slain officer was well-trained. He was very well-respected. He was very professional. He was responding to a suspicious person's call at Hinkle Field House where the, where the girls' basketball team was, was, was practicing. And at the time, the, when he encountered the suspect, he was, he was shot and killed. And the officer was armed, and the suspect stole his gun. So when the manhunt ensued, the suspect had two guns. Eventually, Sheriff's deputies caught, caught up with him on the manhunt. A firefight ensued, and the suspect was killed, so we never know why he did it. But if you told us right then that some staff member, not law enforcement, with a gun was running around campus, we would not have felt more safe. In fact, we would probably felt in more danger, because that's another person with a gun running around campus who's not law enforcement. And I believe that a staff member with a permit to carry who would have encountered that situation would have risked both themselves and potentially others who could have gotten caught in the crossfire. Now, I don't stand here today pretending that there's one magic solution to school safety. Some solutions can be done on the local level, but one of those measures must not be arming staff members. Now, one solution that could be enacted, or could be implemented, it was suggested by Dave Morlock at his testimony, at his testimony before the legislation, as well as, it's been repeated in the press, secure, securing perimeter, investing money to secure perimeter doors, as well as investing money to secure the entrances at three of the high schools, as well as investing money towards other securities technology. This could deter trespassers. The shooter on the Butler's campus was a trespasser. That was Butler's first homicide ever. Now, arming volunteers would not have saved the officer's life back at Butler, but positive solutions that secure front and perimeter entrances could deter trespassers and prevent the situ, and prevent situations like what happened at Butler happening in the Osseo School District. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel. Next up, I would like to call Nicole Green.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
My name is Nicole Green. I have lived in this area for nearly the last twenty years, and I've been a parent in this district since 2008. I think the recent departure and the circumstances of some of the members of this body have made it clear to me that the thought that is represented in this chamber does not necessarily value my presence, doesn't value my contribution in this community, and it would prefer that my children did not exist or would be invisible in the classroom, or would just go away. Or at least accept the desires and the wishes of that thought perspective as being the right, the moral, and the powerful in this nation. And I don't want that to continue. And I do know that we in this room, that the adults in this room, can do whatever we decide to do, whatever we put our minds to do. And if we don't believe that, then we're in the wrong place, because that's the message that we're sending our children. That's what we're teaching them every day in the classroom. So I need you to know, as you move forward, and replacing those who have recently removed themselves from the board, that my children aren't going away, I'm not going away. You need them. We all need them. It is obvious that this board does not reflect the perspective of the children that are in the classroom, the children that were singing here this evening. This board does not reflect, does not look like those children. The children that are in the classroom are diverse, and they deserve to be represented. The children who are going to lead us, who are going to be innovators, who are going to solve the world's problems, they need to be represented by people who support them, who care about them, who want them to prosper, who understand that their value today will only exponentially grow. I do know that the efforts to encourage this collective body over the years to make effective representation have been met with a lack of interest and a lack of leadership. As I said, any group of adults collectively together who decide to focus on anything, you can accomplish it. The fact that it hasn't happened, the fact that this room, that this leadership, that this panel, that this platform does not look like the classroom reflects a desire, a lack of desire, a lack of interest, and a lack of will. You can do it, you must. We're not going away. Don't say we're not here, don't say we're not ready, don't say we don't want to do it. That's not true. You can believe that, but your belief that is not true should not determine how this platform moves forward.
Thank you very much, Ms. Green. Next, I would like to call Kathy Petruzy to the stand.
Good evening, Superintendent McGuire, Cabinet Members, and distinguished Board Members. My name is Kathy Petruzy, and I have been an educator for twenty-one years, nineteen of them in the Osseo District. For the past three years, I have been a behavior intervention teacher at Zane Wood Community School. I am here tonight to talk to you about safety. Safety not only for the students entrusted in our care every day, but also the safety of our district personnel who are charged with the important work of educating, nurturing, engaging, and building relationships with our students on a daily basis, so they can truly go out into the world and achieve their dreams. I'm going to tell you a very personal story. On February twenty-eighth, 2018, I entered a second-grade classroom to follow up on a report that a student in that class had been involved in a fight at dismissal the day before. The student is what we consider a high flyer. That means he has been on behavior interventions and has daily interactions with behavior staff members. In fact, the student has accumulated twenty days of out-of-school suspensions this year for physical aggression. He has been involved in fights with multiple students, has been the cause of many phone calls from concerned parents, and has injured at least five different staff members. On this morning, I simply wanted to get his side of the story from the latest incident. After asking three times, the student refused to discuss the incident with me, so I left the classroom. As I was walking away, the student ran up from behind, jumped on my back, grabbed me around the neck, and threw me to the floor. The attack resulted in a fractured hip that required surgery and three screws to repair. Doctors still don't know if I will need a full hip replacement. It is important for you to understand that this student has been with us since last spring, and I have repeatedly brought him to the attention of those in a position to take action. Sadly, while the details may differ, this is not an isolated incident in our district. In our building alone, we have had two-hundred-and-forty-six behavior reports involving physical aggression, fighting, or bullying, involving sixty-eight students, and reported by forty-one different staff members. Our staff has filed forty-nine injury reports due to student assault or aggression. I am asking you, is this the learning environment we want for our students? Is this the working environment we want for our staff? Series 500 in our district policies and procedures addresses discipline and safety. It states in part that, quote, "The School Board recognizes that in order for the district to achieve its mission, a safe and healthy learning environment is essential. Students, therefore, must conduct themselves in a manner that maintains a climate in which learning can take place," end quote. I am here tonight to tell you that from my viewpoint, this is not happening. I implore you to review our safety and discipline policies and to ensure that the policies do enough to protect our students and staff. As you enter the process, please spend considerable time in our buildings, so that there is not a disconnect between the policymakers and the people doing the day-to-day work in our buildings. In closing, I want to be perfectly clear that I believe in the Osseo School District. All three of my children graduated from this district, and I will continue to work every day to fulfill our mission. I am simply asking that you create policies and procedures with input from all stakeholders to ensure a nurturing, safe environment for students and staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Petruzy. I'd like to next call Mr. Brett Frazeth.
I would like to address the School Board to remind them of their obligations to the community. You were elected by the people of the district to represent them, all of them. Whether the School Board has representatives from the communities in the district or not, it is the sworn responsibility of the School Board to represent everyone, stand up for everyone, especially the children of the district. When a member of the School Board makes statements on the public record that are dangerous and reckless, there should be a public statement from the remaining School Board to denounce those statements which were not germane to the meeting at hand. The ill-conceived proposals he made only served to put students and district staff members in harm's way, and Dr. McGuire was right to address these comments immediately. Yet the School Board has remained silent. When the same School Board has been accused of making racist, Islamophobic, and hateful remarks off the record yet in the public sphere, those statements should be publicly denounced. Those vile statements here, I will not state those vile statements here, as they would only serve to give those wretched words new life today, but know that they are heinous vitriol. Whether you choose to believe that those words were in fact his words, and that he did indeed mean them at face value, or that he was somehow misunderstood and misinterpreted, those words need to be addressed and condemned. Again, I applaud Dr. McGuire for responding decisively to speak against those statements, which are contrary to the values and the mission of the School Board sitting right behind you. But the silence of the School Board demonstrates either a lack of understanding about what those words mean, or that you do not believe what they say. If you do not say something, you are complicit. You condone it. Speak against these words, whether you would like to allow yourself to believe that he meant them or not. I am here as a teacher and a union leader to speak clearly against the ideals he portrays. I have worked hard in this district to change the narrative and will not be silent when hateful words are spoken, so I must speak up. Will you do the same, or will you continue to remain silent? We expect a School Board that represents the needs of this community and values the members of this community, regardless their zip code, regardless their race, regardless their religion. It is what you have sworn to do. We will accept nothing less. If you do not see the importance of this, then you have proven the need for what the petitions from the community seek to do, which is to find a new way to elect leadership to represent all areas of this district. Also bear this in mind as you fill the vacancy. I will leave you with the words from two people who experienced firsthand the devastation of silence by those in the majority and in power. If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor. If an elephant stands on its foot on the tail of a mouse, and you say that you are neutral, the mouse will not appreciate your neutrality. From Desmond Tutu. Finally, neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented.
Thank you, Mr. Frazeth. Next, I would like to call Collette Hempel to the stand, please.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Staff, and Community. I don't know about the Facebook and the other comments about guns wanting to make it a safe environment. Everybody's been grasping at straws on how to protect kids. But I will say, when we passed that levy for technology, I asked the Superintendent about the fact that the year before, when it failed, and it was supposed to make it equal across the district and stuff, she said that it was not, that this time when it passed, it was not designated to do that. There were two Board Members that emailed me saying that the disparities across this district were unbelievable. One of those Board Members is still on the board. The other one was, was the Chairman that has left the School Board. Now, whether there has been a true difference in the last three years of our levy dollars or not, I don't know. But I do know that Brooklyn Park City Council passed a resolution requesting that this Board become equally representation for those in Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center. At this point, that needs to happen. You, as a group, need to provide a report showing that the number of computers, the iPads, the notebooks, and the internet access and speed across this district, especially on the east side of this district, east of 169, have the same equipment as those on the west side, and not just Woodland. I am sick and tired, and I have not been here the last few years, because my son's been in college, but I do not believe things have changed, and I implore you to hire a Superintendent that truly believes in Brown versus the Board of Education and will truly make it equal access for every child in this community. And I implore you to do the work and make it so that three votes for sitting on this Board are east of 169, to this fall when there's an election, and one again in two years. This has to change, because kids that live in poverty do not deserve to be treated like they are second-rate, whether it's race-based, or whether it's just based on who's got the amount of money that they can write out the check for the school. It's not right, and I've said this for more than a decade. Fix it now.
Thank you, Collette. Superintendent McGuire, I would ask that we take a look at some of those issues. I know that Mr. Paternas is new, but has been doing a lot of effort in revamping our entire program, so I think that we could have some discussion in the future as we continue to go forward with our- continue to go forward with our digital learning for all and to address those concerns. So, thank you. I'd like to call Mustafa Deary to the stand. I hope that was close, sir.
Hello.
Good evening.
Chair, good evening, chair, board. My name is Mustafa. I am an educator. I am a parent advocate, also community organizer in the Twin Cities and surrounding suburbs. The reason I'm here tonight is something that really bothers me for the last couple weeks. Most of you know, one of your board members, how he spoke about the Muslims. And it really, I'm not surprised personally, because I see all these issues all the time, but what bothers me is that lack of accountability for the districts or anywhere else. If you guys remember, last year's summer, we have a mosque in Bloomington bomb. So you ask yourself, why three men from three hundred, six hundred mile away from Bloomington come to Bloomington and bomb? Those are kind of words, irresponsibility of some people, inspire those kind of hate. We have all this issue going on. There's another one in a different state, Arizona, this week, and every single day in this state, across the country, young Muslim has been harassed and abused, mainly most of them are women because they're visible. Everybody can see the hijab, and many young women are afraid to even go to schools or work sometimes and work late. History will repeat, I mean, we are human beings, we are short-minded, I mean, we have short memories. This kind of abuse from the top leadership in Washington, from here, if this continues, the history will repeat itself. We see this kind of drama in nineteen thirty-nine and forties, and we'll see how the consequences have become. And if we continue this, accepting this kind of behavior, then we're gonna, history will repeat itself, and the next generation will judge us. Do we stop this kind of hatred, or we allow them to continue? Finally.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you. Finally, I'm a parent advocate and educational advocate. I don't believe schools belong to guns, and thank you, those of you who speak out this freely. Let the teachers teach, let the educators educate, and let the police do their job. No guns in the school, and we will not support anybody who says that our kids, teachers should be armed. I'm absolutely, we're gonna take away our kids, the district, if that is the case, because we don't want. I'm the first one who, victim, knows what the guns look like. I was seventeen, my brother was killed, and I was in refugee camps. We know what the violence and guns look like. You guys, many of you watch Hollywood movies, but we live a real life against violence, and bullets has no discrimination. It hits anybody, and it's not a good thing. Let the children learn, safe environment, and it's your responsibility to provide that, but not the shore, shore one. Cut the shore so you hire teachers to arm. It's not right. So hopefully, that's enough. Thank you so much for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mustafa. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Superintendent McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A regular part of the superintendent's report is to share points of pride. Points of pride celebrate students, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. And I've asked cabinet members to share those points of pride tonight.
In the category of achieving dreams, many sports teams and individuals from Osseo area schools participated in state tournaments throughout the past month. Highlights include six wrestlers qualified for state, including Maple Grove junior Joey Thompson, who won the school's first-ever state wrestling title. Three gymnasts competed at state with Maple Grove's Nadia Abid winning the silver medal on balance beam. The Maple Grove Senior High Girls Basketball Team, Section Eight, Four-A winners, finished sixth at the state tournament. The Osseo Senior High Boys Basketball Team won the Section Five, Four-A title, and the Maple Grove Senior High Boys Team won the Section Eight, Four-A title. Both teams begin state tournament play tomorrow. The district's PI-adapted floor hockey team finished third at the state tournament on March seventeenth. The CI-adaptive team placed sixth. Read more about these outstanding accomplishments on our Facebook and Twitter pages and the district website throughout the spring.
Nearly one hundred Osseo area school elementary students took part in the Build 'Em and Bust 'Em event February twenty-third at the University of Minnesota. This event challenges participants to create a bridge out of toothpicks and glue. Bridges are judged based on their strength, creativity, weight, and aesthetics. Eight Osseo students took home awards, including Woodland Elementary's Michael Beasley and Abby Pelleranto, Rush Creek's Wyatt Yugstad and Addison Sorbell, shown in this photo, Basswood's Lexi Hanna and Fernbrook's students Chloe Brown, Emma Horan, and Roman Longawu. Jonathan Whackerman, a junior at Maple Grove Senior High, scored in the top two-point-five percent of the on-the PSAT among all Hispanic Latino test takers in our region. Jonathan will participate in the National Hispanic Recognition Program, a prestigious academic honor that can be included on his college applications. Jane and Renee O, sisters who attend Osseo area schools, are first-place winners in the Minnesota Department of Transportation's twenty-eighteen Aviation Poster Contest. Renee, a fourth grader at Weaver Lake Elementary, won the six-through-nine age group, while Jane, an Osseo Senior High student, was the top finisher in the fourteen-through-seventeen age group. Three Fernbrook Elementary fifth graders received recognition in the Invest Right National Writing Competition for students participating in the Stock Market Game. The Stock Market Game is an interactive learning experience where participants receive a virtual one-hundred thousand to invest over a fourteen-week period, competing with other students for the highest-valued portfolio. Matthew Kornick's essay placed ninth nationally among hundreds of essay submissions. He was also the top essay writer among elementary students in Minnesota. Fernbrook's Juna Kang and Celia Ramsey also received state-level recognition in the writing contest.
Two Osseo Senior High students earned medals in the National Scholastic Art Competition, and their artwork will be on display at Carnegie Hall in New York City. Eric Lundstrom received a silver medal in photography, and Ben Gilbertson received a gold medal in ceramics. Last month, North Hennepin Community College featured artwork by three Osseo area school students in its Northwestern High School Art Exhibition. Students artists whose work was displayed were Madison Stricker from Maple Grove Senior High, Ashley Yang from Osseo Senior High, and Miriam Abu Shnena from Park Center Senior High.
In the category of contributing to community, students from Park Center Senior High visited second, third, and fourth-grade classrooms at Fair Oaks Elementary on March second to celebrate Read Across America Day. This community-building event provided elementary students with the opportunity to see high school role models. For the high school students, it was a chance to connect with younger learners and give back to Osseo area schools' community through reading. In the category of lifelong learning, ten students from Park Center Senior High recently submitted four-thousand-word essays to fulfill requirements of the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program. Candidates for the IB Diploma are required to complete an extended essay on a research question of their choice. Students from Osseo Area Learning Center recently visited the State Capitol Building to talk with legislators about innovative learning experiences. Students shared their stories with legislators, including Representative Dennis Smith and Melissa Hotorn, and Senator Warren Limer. This opportunity was sponsored by the Minnesota Association of Alternative Programs.
Nine Maple Grove Senior High students participated in the American Heart Association's Advancing Sciences Fusion Event on February twenty-eighth. At this event, students received mentoring from medical industry professionals and had the opportunity to present information about science, technology, engineering, and mathematics initiatives at Maple Grove Senior High. Event attendees then voted for their favorite initiatives. The Maple Grove students received the second-most votes and earned seven thousand dollars to support STEM programming at their school. Engineering was on display at Weaver Lake Elementary earlier this month as fourth- and fifth-grade students used wooden planks to build marble runs in the school's makerspace. When the structures were complete, K-through-three students tested them out during visits to the media center. Forty-seventh and eighth graders at Osseo Middle School had the opportunity to co-author stories with professional writers as part of the Top Secret Unfinished Storybox Program. In this national program, students choose an unfinished young adult's story and write as much or as little as they choose to continue the story, all while keeping the author's voice intact. On March eighth, students gathered in Osseo Middle's Media Center to pack up the storybox and send it to its next school in Kansas.
Fourth and fifth-grade students at Fair Oaks Elementary received an inspirational boost March first from David and Michelle Freeman, a husband-and-wife duo who spoke to students about using goal-setting to stay on track, find their purpose, and achieve their dreams. Michelle, a two thousand and eight Olympian for Team USA in track and field, also relayed the importance of teamwork and positivity. More than sixty student actors at Birch Grove Elementary School for the Arts put a new spin on a classic tale and took audiences through the looking glass as they presented Wonderland. Four public performances were held from March ninth to the eleventh. Director Chris Holson said students began rehearsing in December and even helped develop some of the show's choreography.
Under the category of mission-driven employees, Birch Grove Elementary School for the Arts and Weaver Lake Elementary, a science and math and technology school, were recently ranked among the top magnet schools in the nation. Both schools earned the twenty-eighteen National Award of Distinction from Magnet Schools of America. In partnership with Maple Grove Hospital, the Minnesota Department of Health, Fairview Health Services, and Fairview Foundation, nurses from Osseo area schools participated in a staff development day on March ninth, where they gained knowledge to help youths aged twelve to eighteen who may be developing a health problem, a mental health problem, or experiencing a mental health crisis. During the eight-hour course, nurses learned how to identify, understand, and respond to mental health issues and crisis in adolescents. District Nurse Elaine Forbes collaborated with the Maple Grove Hospital to bring this training to Osseo nursing staff.
Thank you, and I'll close with two last pieces of news. First, about our Minnesota Teacher of the Year candidates. Two Osseo area schools' teachers have been named semifinalists for Education Minnesota two thousand and eighteen Teacher of the Year. Jacquannetta Mitchell, an English teacher at Osseo Senior High, and Lisa Thompson, a fifth-grade teacher at Basswood Elementary School. Ten finalists will be named in late March, and the top award will be announced in May two thousand and eighteen. Jacquannetta and Lisa were among seven Osseo area schools' teachers previously named candidates for the award, which is the highest number of nominees we've had in recent years, and was second only to St. Paul Public Schools this year. Our other candidates were Deb Amoles from Basswood, Jessica Carr from Fernbrook, Rich Johnston from Osseo Middle, Anne Kazarak from Edinburgh, and Jennifer Paulson from Woodland Elementary School. And lastly, the Association of School Business Officials International, also known as ASBO, has again recognized Osseo area schools with a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. The award recognizes high-quality financial reporting and accountability through a comprehensive annual financial report that demonstrates credibility, confidence, and transparency, and it is the highest recognition offered by ASBO. Osseo area schools has earned this award every year since fiscal year nineteen ninety.
Okay, next on the agenda are the school board reports, and I think Heather, or Director Douglas, will read the ECMAC reports.
Thank you, Acting Chair Mustafi.
Chair, no.
Oh, chair, you're right, sorry.
Can't even get director. I apologize.
Okay. February twenty-six, twenty eighteen Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee summary as follows. The February twenty-six, twenty eighteen meeting of the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee was held at Park Center Senior High School. Principal Heather Miller-Sink hosted a brief tour and answered a few committee questions about Park Center. The purpose of the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee is to increase community trust in long-range planning for enrollment and building use. The committee will analyze information affecting enrollment, capacity, and building use, and generate observations and recommendations to be communicated to district administration. This advisory committee includes twenty-nine community members who represent diverse perspectives of the families and community members served by Osseo area schools, seven administrative staff members, and two teachers, and two school board members. The outcomes from the February meeting were that the ECMAC members would learn about and provide perspectives about initial elementary capacity calculations, and begin to develop a shared understanding of need. At the February meeting, Linay Showen of World Architects and Engineers taught committee members about the data points used to calculate elementary school capacity and the variables that make calculations of capacity complex. Feedback is solicited at the end of each meeting to continually improve meeting content and format. Information was reviewed at the meeting, has been posted to the district website. March thirteenth, twenty eighteen Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee summary. At the March thirteenth, twenty eighteen work session, the school board learned about the district's ongoing efforts in planning for enrollment and capacity management, which is priority work identified in the district's strategic plan as follows. Implementation of the enrollment and capacity management framework will lead to increased community trust in the school district through engagement in long-range planning for enrollment and capacity use. During the first portion of the work session, staff members, along with a representative from World Architects and Engineers, an architectural firm that specializes in facility studies, apprised the board about the status of the work of ECMAC. In particular, an outline of the method used to assign elementary building capacity was reviewed in detail. Four ECMAC members offered their perspectives about their experience as a member of ECMAC and how the committee works to support the ECMAC purpose, to increase community trust in Osseo area schools through engagement in long-range planning for enrollment and building use. The board was reminded of ECMAC's efforts to build a shared understanding of need before built potential recommendations for solutions are considered. ECMAC expects to return to the May eighth school board work session to provide another update regarding the committee's fiscal year twenty eighteen work. March nineteenth, twenty eighteen Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee summary. The March nineteenth, twenty eighteen meeting of the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee was held at Garden City Elementary School. Principal David Branch hosted a school tour and provided an overview of Garden City. The purpose of the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee is to increase community trust in long-range planning for enrollment and building use. The community will analyze information affecting enrollment, capacity, and building use, and generate observations and recommendations to be communicated to district administration. The outcomes for the March meeting were that ECMAC members would learn about and provide perspectives about initial secondary capacity calculations, and continue to develop a shared understanding of need. Committee members reviewed elementary capacity analyst's work completed at the February meeting to surface potential observations that would lead to a shared understanding of need. Linay Showen of World Architects and Engineers taught committee members about the data points used to calculate secondary school capacity and the variables that make calculations of capacity complex. Feedback is solicited at the end of each meeting to continually improve meeting content and format. Information that was reviewed at the meeting has been posted to the district website. All board work sessions are open to the public. All board work sessions are open to the public. This work session was also videotaped. Members of the public can access recordings of work sessions on the district website.
Thank you. And Director Burgett will tell us about the February 27th and March 12th policy committee meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The school board policy committee met here at the Educational Service Center at 6:00 PM Tuesday, February 28th. Board members Bob Gerhardt, Jim Burgett, and Mike Ostaffi attended. Superintendent Kate McGuire and General Counsel Tim Palmetier also attended. The committee continued review of proposed Policy 413 and Procedure 413 regarding prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and violence. After providing input and recommending minor language changes, the committee recommended that amended Policy 413 be moved to first reading and that Policy 548 be repealed due to its incorporation into the amended Policy 413. The committee also continued review of proposed Policies 420, Communicable Diseases Related to Personnel, and 547, Communicable Diseases Related to Students and Corresponding Procedures. The committee recommended that amended Policy 420 to be moved to first reading and that Policy 547 be repealed due to its incorporation into amended Policy 420. The committee reviewed Policy 423, Employee and Student Relationships. The committee considered and recommended specific amendments to the policy and recommended that the amended policy be moved to first reading. Finally, the committee discussed amendment to District Policy 203, Operation of the School Board, to add an appointment process in the event of a vacancy on the board. The school board policy committee also, on Monday, March 12th, met also on Monday, March 12th, 2018. Board members Jim Burgett, Heather Douglas, Stephanie Fortner, and Mike Ostaffi attended. Superintendent Kate McGuire and General Counsel Tim Palmetier also attended. During this meeting, the committee discussed the development of potential changes to the school board bylaws and a detailed process for filling school board vacancies. The committee also reviewed and had preliminary discussions regarding Policy 506 concerning student discipline. Once again, all school board policy committee meetings are open to the public. Members of the public can access committee agendas and supporting documents on the district website. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Burgett. Next up is a session summary, or work session summary, from March 6th by Director Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The school board held a work session on Tuesday, March 6, 2018. The work session was held at Park Center International Baccalaureate World School, where board members took a tour of several areas of the school which have benefited from capital improvement projects recently. Excuse me. Next, school board members received an update on the achievement and integration for Minnesota budget. The budget supports direct student programming such as Freedom Schools, student internships, bilingual program assistance, and other staff and programs. Arlene Fairbanks, Chair of the American Indian Education Committee, spoke with the board regarding the committee's vote of concurrence on our American Indian Education Program, which serves approximately 400 students. Part of the AI budget provides support for our American Indian Education Program. Board members then received an update on the comprehensive long-term facilities, maintenance, LTFM, plan, and budget. LTFM revenue is a combination of pay-as-you-go levy and bond, and is the board's most important tool to protect the district's capital assets. LTFM projects most often include things such as the building envelope, electrical interior finishes, mechanical systems, pavements, and roof systems. Staff reviewed the planning cycle, the funding strategy, and assessment process for LTFM projects. Board members reviewed projects completed during summer 2017, which came in under budget. Staff also provided information about the major projects scheduled for summer 2018, which will impact many schools in the district with major projects at Northview Middle School, Osseo Middle School, Oakview, and Park Center High School. Next steps in the LTFM process include board approval of the updated 10-year LTFM plan in July, consideration of another bond sale in fall 2018, and certification of the levy in December 2018. The last agenda item at the work session was an update on a World's Best Workforce Strategic Plan priority goal regarding digital learning. Specifically, it is a board priority that students experience learning that is personalized in path, place, and pace through the use of digital tools. Staff reported on the updated Digital Learning for All, DL4A, plan, and recommended technology devices to support the plan. The new plan has a sharper focus on teaching and learning practices that better support student success in the digital age. In addition, the plan will improve technical device management, include responsive professional development for staff, provide time to further research appropriate devices for the middle and elementary level, and provide improved financial management strategies. Board members expressed support for the recommended devices and will take action on a lease agreement at a subsequent meeting. Again, all school board work sessions are open to the public and are also audiotaped. Members of the public can access audio recordings of work sessions on our district website. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Craig. Next up is a summary of the March 13 work session by Director Fortner.
At the March 13 school board work session, board members reviewed a proposal regarding turf fields at the three high school locations and a policy with accompanying procedures for filling a board vacancy. The turf field proposal, Superintendent McGuire brought forward a recommendation to strategically leverage a combination of an existing financial asset, operating capital, and a partnership with the city of Maple Grove to improve the property at Park Center Senior High School, Maple Grove Senior High School, and Osseo Senior High School for use by students in curricular and extracurricular activities and for use by families and other community members. These improvements included turf fields at all three locations, additional parking at Maple Grove Senior High, improved roadway access at Fernbrook Elementary, and access to a city-owned clubhouse near the Maple Grove Senior High School stadium. Building principals and activity coordinators shared a variety of benefits associated with this project. Some of these benefits included more outdoor classroom space, improved injury prevention from the participants on these fields, greater flexibility in scheduling field space with continued growing demand for field space, ability to get onto the fields earlier in the spring and stay later into the fall, and improved maintenance over the current grass fields. The board supported the proposal, which included authorization to spend up to $5 million of an existing land proceeds asset. Several next steps were identified as the project moves forward. These next steps included working with the city of Brooklyn Park to explore potential partnerships on the fields at Park Center Senior High School, exploring opportunities with the Hennepin County Youth Sports Grant, additional research and design development of the proposed fields, and exploring additional opportunities for grants and partnerships to support the cost of the project. And we also discussed the board vacancy. General Counsel Tim Palmetier presented the proposed changes to Policy 203, Operations of the School Board bylaws that address the situation of a board vacancy. The policy change was accompanied by a procedure to outline the process for appointing a person to a vacant board seat. Board discussion led to several modifications to proposed procedures. Suggested changes included how to address ties in the ranking system, how the board would recommend a final appointee, and utilizing a work session to deliberate on the candidates. The board recommended moving forward on the policy changes and is taking action at tonight's meeting. All school board work sessions are open to the public. This work session was also audiotaped. Members of the public can access recordings of the work sessions on the district website.
Thank you, Director Fortner. On March 19th, last night, there was a special meeting. The school board held a special meeting to continue its work in selecting a new superintendent. At the meeting, the board authorized the search firm of Ray &amp; Associates to contact the potential finalists to confirm their continued interest and availability for round-one interviews and to release those candidates' names no earlier than 1:00 PM this afternoon, which was done. Six finalists will be invited to participate in first-round interviews on April 2nd and April 3rd. The finalists are Rupak Gandhi from Harrison District 2 in Colorado Springs, Colorado, James Harris from Daniel Boone Area School District in Douglasville, Pennsylvania, Krish Mohib from Youngstown City Schools in Youngstown, Ohio, Kelly Parpart from Osseo Area Schools in Maple Grove, Minnesota, Eric Pruitt from Houston Independent School District in Houston, Texas, and Mark Schaefer from Boulder Valley School District in Boulder, Colorado. Interested community members can learn more about the next steps on the district website in the special section for the superintendent search. And I do invite everybody to come out and participate in those meetings and follow along as best you can. Thank you. Next up is agenda item number nine, the Consent Agenda. Do I have a, are there any additions or deletions from the consent agenda? None? Okay. So I need a motion to, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Burgett to approve the items in the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes, five to zero. All right. Next up, our list of action items. A resolution relating to $13,640,000 general obligation school-building refunding bond, series, and covenanting, and obligating the district to be bound by and to use of the provisions of Minnesota Statute Section 126(c)(55) to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest of these bonds. We will please invite Patricia Magnuson and Joel Sutter to speak.
This action item provides for the refunding of an outstanding bond issue, which we anticipate will result in savings to our taxpayers of just over $360,000 over the next three years. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Joel Sutter from Ellers &amp; Associates, who is the district's financial advisor, to introduce the resolution and the pre-sale report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, Dr. McGuire, it's a pleasure to be back here. Ellers is your financial advisor. We have worked with you since, I think, 2000 or 2001 on bond issues, other forms of debt issuance, operating referendums, and a variety of other financial projects. And I have worked with your district since that time continuously, and I have with me tonight two of my colleagues who represent the next generation of outstanding advisors from Ellers. Shelby McQuaid has been with us for almost two years and previously worked at the Minnesota Senate. Barbie Doyle just joined us in December and previously worked at a consortium of school districts based in Matcato that provided computing services and accounting support for school districts. So we're happy to have them here. And Shelby will be working directly with your school district on future projects along with Jody Zesba and myself. And Barbie may, in the future, at this point, she's here, this is part of her orientation and training processes to follow us around. So we are here tonight to talk about the refunding of bonds, which will result in a savings to your taxpayers. You have in your packet a pre-sale report that summarizes the details of this bond issue and the estimated impact of that. So I won't spend a lot of time on this. You've got a lot on your agenda, but I will hit some highlights of this. So if you turn to the second page of the pre-sale report, we note that this finances a current refunding of your Series 2010A bonds. A current refunding under federal rules is a refunding where the bonds are sold within 90 days of the date that the previous bonds can be called, and that date is August 1st. So this issue will close in May within 90 days of that. Then there's, in the purposes, we talk a lot about the numbers. I think I'll flip back to page five and hit some of the highlights of those numbers. Page five shows the estimated sources and uses of funds for the bond issue. There are costs associated with issuing bonds. There's, of course, the interest costs in the new bonds. The underwriter's discount, we've estimated at about $54,000. That's an upfront interest charge by the firm that underwrites the bonds. It's kind of like points on a mortgage. There are costs of issuance, which includes the fees to our firm, to your bond attorney, Dorsey &amp; Whitney, to the rating agency Moody's, and a few other incidental fees. Those fees are, those costs are all financed out of the new bond issue. So there's no direct cost out of the district's budget, but it is part of the costs that are financed out of the new bond issue. Page six shows the remaining payments on this 2010 bond issue. There are only three years left to pay on this after the call date, and a total of $853,000 in interest left to pay on those bonds. So the savings aren't as impressive as they have been on some of the larger refunding issues that we've done for you, but that's because you only have $853,000 left to pay. So even if the interest rate was zero and there were no costs associated, that's the most you could save. So it's not the millions of dollars that we've seen on some previous refundings. Page seven shows the estimated payments on the new bond issue. We expect interest rates ranging from about 1.6% to 1.8%, and hopefully, as the market may continue to improve, it may be more than that. Page eight shows the estimated savings from the refunding. It's $361,000. There won't be any savings in fiscal year 19 or any significant savings because you've already levied the taxes to make those payments. So the savings are focused the next two years at about $180,000 a year estimated. That will reduce property taxes payable in 2019 and 2020. So going back to the pre-sale report, I will hit a couple of other points. We do mention the rating on page two. We will get a bond rating on these bonds. Your current underlying bond rating is AA1 from Moody's Investor Service. That is just one notch below the gold standard of a AAA rating, the highest rating that a district can receive. So we will be conducting a conference call with Moody's on April 5th, and we will present all the information about what's going on in your district. There's a lot of good things going on. I've looked at your financials, and they continue to improve. Your debt levels are not that high compared to other districts. So we'll hope for an upgrade in your rating, but I certainly can't promise that. So we don't get to vote on that. That's up to Moody's. I mentioned, under method of sale, we mentioned that we'll solicit competitive bids for the purchase of the bonds. We think that's the only way you can ensure you're getting the best deal possible on that date. Under review of existing debt, I want you to know that we monitor this all the time to look for refunding opportunities at least twice a year. We send out a report to your management team about the status of your current issues and which ones are eligible for refunding. So there are no other opportunities for refundings at this point. And then on page four, we show the schedule involved in this. We will prepare an official statement, which is an offering document for the bonds. That'll be distributed the week of April 2nd. Board members will all receive a copy of that, which is required under federal rules. We will have the conference call with the rating agency that was just scheduled on Friday on April 5th. And then at the April 17th meeting, we'll take bids on the bonds, and one of us will be here to present those results and ask you to award sale of the bonds. So those are the highlights. I will stress again, this will save an estimated $360,000. That does not directly benefit the district's budget. All of that will be savings to the taxpayers. And you do have a resolution in your packet that would authorize the sale of bonds and have you participate in the state credit enhancement program.
Thank you for saving us $360,000. Does anyone have any questions?
Ditto.
Duly noted.
Absolutely. Good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I will make a motion to approve the resolution relating to $13,640,000 in general obligation school-building refunding bonds, series, and covenanting, and obligating the district to be bound by and to use the provisions of Minnesota Statutes, Section 126(c)(55), to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on these bonds. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Burgett. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-nothing.
Thank you.
Item 10B on the agenda is a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for adjustments in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Judy McDonald.
Thank you, Chair Ostaffi. Every time during this month, we make sure the board is prepared to provide us direction related to the adjustments we need to make to staffing levels as we roll out and determine our staffing needs for next year. So this resolution basically provides our superintendent and delegated individuals with the authority to do so.
Okay. Thank you. And I will make a motion to approve the resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for adjustments in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Douglas. Are there any discussions or questions? Hearing none, I will make, I will bring that to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Aye? Opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Action item number 10c is an amendment of Policy 203, the bylaws, Procedure For Filling a Board Vacancy Requiring Immediate Action. Tim Palmetier?
Thank you, Chair Ostafi, School Board members, Superintendent McGuire. Amendment to Board Policy 203, the board bylaws, is on tonight's agenda as an action item. At the policy committee on March 12th and the work session on March 13th, the committee and board discussed potential revisions to bylaws to address a current vacancy on the board. The recommendations from these meetings was to move forward with a revision to the bylaws, setting forth fundamental components of a process to fill a vacancy. Those components include a process to notify eligible persons about the vacancy, an application process, a process for board members to review and rank potential candidates, a process for candidates to address the board in an open meeting, and a process for the board to deliberate and select their candidate in an open meeting. The board also directed administration to develop a more detailed selection process based on the proposed bylaws, which have also been included in tonight's agenda. In light of the current vacancy on the board, the proposed revisions to the bylaws are being presented pursuant to Board Policy 208 tonight, which permits the board to waive the typical policy reading process and to take immediate action to adopt or revise a policy in matters of unusual urgency. Under School Board Policy and Bylaws, the bylaws will be amended and implemented as proposed if approved by the board this evening.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Tim. I will make a motion to approve the amendment of Policy 203, the bylaws, a procedure for filling board vacancy requiring immediate action. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Douglas. Any questions? Any comment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question for Tim. I'm wondering if you could state to us if the number, or how many other districts in the state have a policy for a board vacancy?
Yes. We did a lot of looking, Dr. McGuire and myself, when this issue came up. I will say that very few do, and those that do maybe don't have the cleanest of policies. So I think in many respects, we were left to kind of recreate the wheel in some respects with respect to the policy itself, but also the underlying procedures that we put before the board today as well.
Thank you.
And I do believe that, you know, we are putting a policy forth that will invite participation from all residents, all eligible residents in the district. This is something we had several discussions on, so in public, so I think that went very well. There is some concerns about exigent circumstances. Sometimes this could be a two- to three-month procedure. In the future, we'll probably have to have a more, a discussion about that in cases where we would need to fill something extremely quickly. But as it stands, I think this gets us a long way there to put it down so that everybody understands what that process is. So with that, I will, we already made the motion. I'll call the vote. All in favor of amending Policy 203? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Okay, and the fun one, 10, action item 10d, Gifts to the District Totalling $53,836.81. I almost said $53 million.
That'd be nice.
I will make a motion to thankfully approve the gifts to the district totaling $53,836.81. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Fortner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you to all who donate to our district. It is very much appreciated. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is informational items. First reading of Policy 413, Prohibition Against Discrimination, Harassment, and Violence. Tim Palmetier?
Thank you, Chair Ostafi. If you will allow, I will do the first read on all of the items on A through E on informational items.
All right.
The first, the following policies are on the agenda for first read tonight. Policy 413, Prohibition Against Discrimination, Harassment, and Violence. The proposed policy and procedures are required under federal and state law. The revised policy combines Policy 413, which relates to employee-related harassment, and 548, which concerns student-related harassment. The proposed policy has been revised to prohibit both harassment and discrimination based upon a student or employee's protected status under the Minnesota Human Rights Act. The proposed policy and procedures were also revised to ensure compliance with specific due process requirements required by the U.S. Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, and the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. Specifically, the proposed policy and procedures enhance reporting procedures, investigation procedures, notification requirements, and appeal procedures. Next, Policy 548, Student Harassment and Violence. As previously stated, this policy is being proposed for repeal based on its incorporation into Policy 413, as I just discussed. Policy 420 is also up for consideration. This concerns student and employees with communicable diseases and infectious conditions. This policy is not required by state or federal law. However, the district has maintained a policy related to communicable diseases for both students and employees since 1999, given the potential risks posed by communicable diseases and certain reporting obligations imposed by state and federal regulations. The policy committee has proposed maintaining and updating the policy. The proposed policy requires the adoption of practices to prevent the spread of infection and addresses privacy and information-sharing concerns related to affected persons. Finally, the policy incorporates a requirement of Minnesota law requiring in the implementation of programs that help prevent the spread of sexually transmitted diseases. And last, Policy 423, Employee-Student Relationships. This policy is not required by state or federal law. The amended policy is revised to address employee-to-student interactions that might not otherwise be addressed under the harassment policy. Specifically, the proposed policy would clarify that employees should not intimidate, berate, or shame students for sincerely held beliefs. The proposed policy also clarifies that familial relationships between employees and students may create certain exceptions to the overall policy. First reading begins a four-week period of reaction to the proposed policy changes by concerned groups or individuals. After the four-week period, the School Board may adopt a policy after second reading. The proposed policies are available on the school district website with the agenda for this meeting. Comments on those proposed policies may be directed to the School Board or to myself. Comments on these proposed policies may also be provided online from the School Board Policy and Procedure webpage on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Palmetier. Board members, any questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Next up are announcements. A negotiation strategy meeting will be held Tuesday, March 20 to 18 at 10 minutes from now, in Room N10 at the Educational Service Center. This meeting will be closed to the public. A School Board special meeting will be held on Monday, April 2nd, 2018, at 5:00 PM in the boardroom at the ESC. The topic will be superintendent search, first-round interviews. This meeting will be open to the public. A School Board special meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, at 5:00 PM in the boardroom at the ESC. The topic will be superintendent search, first-round interviews. This meeting will be open to the public. A School Board special meeting will be held Tuesday, April 10th, at 12:30 PM in the boardroom at the ESC. The topic will be superintendent search, second-round interviews. This meeting will be open to the public. A School Board special meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 10th, at 2018, at 7:00 PM in the boardroom at the ESC. The topic will be superintendent search, second-round interviews. This meeting will be open to the public. A regular School Board meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 17th, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. Negotiation strategy meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 17th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in Room N10 at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public. A School Board special meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 24th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Foreign Room at the ESC. The topic will be School Board Vacancy. This meeting will be open to the public. And with that, we will, I don't know if we're going to make a motion or not. I haven't been paying attention when Bob did. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Seconded by Director Douglas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned at 7:45 PM.